Ladies and gentlemen, caller, please. We present standing for the President of Education and Public Health Invitational for our new year 2016.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow to him, please. Dear everyone, we want to thank you for another opportunity that you've given us to gather around. While we ask that you'll be with this council tonight, we ask that you'll be with them for the duration going into sixteen, that you'll give them the wisdom and the courage to make the decisions that are in the best interest of the locality. While we ask that you'll be with the members that are in attendance tonight, that you give them safe travels home. And ask all this of your sons and daughters.
Thank you. Before we get started on the press presentations and the two gentlemen are not, the one act played from the T H S cannot be here tonight due to the fact that they call off students, they can't attend another meeting, activity, and they will be here in paperwork, and also they will be here to give them paperwork. But before we get started, 2016, the Town Castle was embarking on the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of being a charter town in the state of Virginia. And it's quite an honor to be able to serve as mayor and as people in our best council serve during this time. We have many activities planned, an exciting time, but also 2015 was pretty exciting for the Town Castle. And just, I'm going to throw a few things that we actually did. We actually closed into the right town super project. We got three hundred and some thousand dollars for renovation of the train station. We're putting in new water meters in the town. We put the Route sixty-one bid out licensed them, two point six million dollars. We paid more than we have ever paid in the Town Castle during the year, excess of seven hundred thousand dollars. We upgraded the water project from the high school to the pump station patrol. Eventually helped the town produce water income that way. We got new cruisers, we've had improvements in the public works equipment. We've actually got new welcome to Town Castle sign on the west end. We finished the kitchen in American Legion, established the first Town Castle I D A. And we have received over a million dollars, almost a million dollars in grants, which includes liberty and sharing. Many of the activities we've had during the summer, during the year was the Spring Expo, Back to the Dragon. We had the fireworks for July, we had cruise ends, movies on Main Street, Tractors and Trucks, Main Street Romance, Castle County Fair, Celebration of Arts, Trunk or Treats, Veteran's Day Parade, and then Christmas Parade. And all these were well attended and by far the activities later in the year was with the Trunk or Treats, Celebration of Arts, Veteran's Day Parade, Christmas parade, which we've had in memory. On a good note, we had a couple of grand openings. One of the bigger ones was the Simmons Equipment from Dogwood Road. Client and Associates, we had a relocation between friends on Main Street last week. We had the new Virginia Benefits Office opened up on the west end of Main Street. And also we celebrated the Helps, Clint's Valley Community Action, celebrated their fifty years. Two thousand sixteen is going to be a good new beginning for us. We got plans, I think Irma has Front Porch Restaurant opening up for two thousand sixteen. Also, a couple of weeks ago, Larry Davidson and Danny Addison with the Back to the Dragon has indicated they purchased some land on West Castle for the Back to the Dragon Shopping Center. And the train station renovations will begin and with that, many of the activities around town we have planned for the coming year. So as you can tell, the Town Castle is moving forward and hopefully we can solve some of the problems that faces us today. And the decisions we make today probably affects us twenty, thirty years down the road. When I was doing a little bit of research on Town Castle, I just looked up a history book. And Terry attests to this, Mr. Timon, and this actually happened in eighteen fifty-two before the Town Castle, which was at the end of Jeffersonville. And he talked about the economy this guy was, and he was talking about coal. And it says coal exists everywhere, but wood is so plentiful, it's not, it's used for fuel to any extent. Hence, no research has been made for it. The nearest coal was discovered about four miles from Jeffersonville, which is the Town Castle. And they didn't think it existed in the headwaters or the Prince River. But the big problem then, and sadly to say that, you know, they're just, I'm not supposed to know the offices and look at the day, that they needed an outlet for the coal. And that happened about thirty years after this was written, so with the rubber. So, you know, time stood, it takes time to improve and as history can attest, Castle existed then and had problems then, and we definitely have problems today. But Townville, Kail, and rural south, we look forward to a glowing year. Next on the agenda is public comment is invited. Can I have Tom Mitchell?
My name is Irma Mitchell, three forty East Pine Street, Townville, Virginia. And the only thing I wanted to say was, I just wanted to thank the council for having Castle today. Do the Christmas parade, I think it was great, I think the people was well attended, and I think the people were happy with it, and so we thank you for that and this being the parade.
We appreciate you heading that up and like I said last month, that was the biggest parade we've ever, I can remember in my lifetime, and hats off to you and your committee.
He can go ahead and start playing.
Next is Brian Capes.
Name is Brian Capes, at five twenty, off of the road. We just purchased over the crossing of the road and it's senior lady member care for the beginning. Hopes is that open in sometime in February, or have a meet and greet. Like to invite the council and directors out on the twenty-first, I have a flag here that you can pass out. We're excited to be here, it's good to hear some of the nice things going on around town, and hope that we can be a part of it.
Yes, it's the twenty-first of this month.
Twenty-first of this month.
What time is it?
It is at, starts at eleven-thirty, ends at two, the heavy orders. There are some other folks on that should be able to meet there and out there to do it as well.
Well, welcome. Welcome. It's always good news and having new business in town, and we appreciate you being here. Just give me a brief update on the Veterans' Benefits. They actually had the commissioner of the benefits that came and spoke, and he was originally brought several people from him and those gentlemen, actually a media guy from Charlottesville, now from Charlottesville, visited the office too. So hopefully you'll bring some people with you, and I plan on being there.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Move forward, next is approval of minutes, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I'll take that motion.
Motion, do you have a second, any additions or corrections? You're now called for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, next is approval of financial statements. Do I have a motion to approve those as presented?
So moved.
You have a second.
I'll second.
Any questions? You're now called for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is presentation of projects and activities report, do I have a motion to accept? So moved.
Second.
Are you any questions about those? You're now called for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Tom Andrews, update.
Okay, Mayor, Route sixty-one, my office issued notice of receipt. Actually Friday, this past Friday, the Fodder, hopefully within the next thirty days, at least mobilization will take place with no change on the nature chart. Route sixty-one, the bridge, North Castle Steel, target for two thousand seventeen. The water meter replacement, I think we got any, what, Don?
Eight hundred and fifty.
We got eight hundred and fifty meters a day that are all being reded within the, I don't know, within the island. So pretty good, the rest of them are hand reded, so that project is moving forward, was a good success. The North Castle update, I actually met today with Reverend Blair and another gentleman. So we've got a lot of planes, a lot of areas that we're going to be addressing, both Kyle and Ethel. He's also going to email me back with some dates, so we can meet with some people who may be involved. Come up and maybe we'll get a planning grant, so we're really looking forward to some of the changes we've had in place in that area.
Thank you, Todd. Moving on, the committee, the conference update, this is planning commission, Councilman Martin.
We met last Monday, most of our time was spent on the comprehensive plan, which we hope would have done within another month, presented for public hearing and then waiting for the Town Council. We discussed more of the houses in the town that needs to be looked at. Hope our Chris can get around to those and take care of, that's about it.
Next is the trainee department.
Train Station Committee has several events planned for holidays and the sessions and tenure of year. They just happen to fall that way. First of all, Barry Rakes, the architect for our building, is going to meet with the Train Station Committee on Martin Luther King Day, that's Monday, January eighteenth. We're going to meet at five-thirty at the Historical Society. Anybody who would like to be a part of the Train Station Committee can hear Mr. Rakes and talk to him and share with him our vision for the train station, he will be, he is the architect that is working with that project. And then the Train Station Committee will meet again on Groundhog Day, which is Tuesday, February second. We'll meet at six-thirty that evening at the Historical Society again, and that will be for fundraising committee members coming back and sharing what they've done in terms of the different ideas that came out of the first meeting, doing some local fundraising for the project. January eighteenth, February seventh.
Seventh evening.
I will.
Airport authority, Councilman Ross.
This is a brand new item, so first of all, I want to know how many has not been to Townville County Airport? One, two, three. Okay, over. Well, listen, you need to come up sometime, it's a beautiful thing, and it's a great asset to Townville County, and it's the place where corporate businesses want to come in to visit. So it's a very important part, and I've talked to Leanne, and hopefully every time we advertise something, the airport is included. We just completed a very excellent year, two thousand fifteen. We have all our hangars are full, we have filled our crack, and we have three major projects going on in two thousand sixteen. One of them is the West End Range, which is a very important part of protecting the people down on Graves Branch from floods, which has happened in the past, and that's a very expensive project funded three ways. And the widening of the turnarounds, when the airport was first built, it was built for small aircraft. Now we're having corporate jets in, more so than small aircraft, so we have to do some upgrades to take care of those guys. And where they turn around again, the runways have got to be enlarged, and that's being done this year. The other project that we've got going on is called an environmental assessment for obstruction removal. And what this means is that the airport is a pretty good sized area, two hundred, it's huge, two hundred and some acres. But when you take off in a jet or you're landing, and all the land out in front in a big fan has to be cleared so much based on the angle of approach to the airport. So we have to look at those things, which includes sobriety land. And sometimes we have to do eminent domain and take charge of the trees. And so that's what we're looking at also, is the number three project. These projects are funded by the FAA at ninety percent, the state at eight percent, and the local government at two percent. So you can see we've got a sixteen million dollar airport down there with only two percent pretty much involved from the local folks. But if you've never been there, I invite you down, it's a great, it's a great place. The most beautiful view in the evenings you've ever seen. It overlooks rich lands and timber block very well. And when we did a mountaintop removal to get clearance into the roadway, we've got a site there that could be developed in an outstanding recreational site, which I've got approval from the FAA to do that, as long as I don't build anything over to the ten feet tall. So a lot of things happen at the airport, but if you haven't been, you need to come down and take a little tour. And we'd be happy to give a tour. We do a lot of tours in the spring for school. You wouldn't believe how many little schools come up there and do tours. I'm real proud of the airport, and it's here to serve Townville County.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, next on the agenda is unfinished business, Town EMS payment update.
That was done in work session, maybe you can do that.
Okay. All right, Department of State, choose the program.
That was also a discussion, work session, they can come up with E and G on the fourth. So, Irma, we will be, we had, we had two of those. Take the look at Jerry. So Irma, it will be on July the fourth, so make the plan and around, the seating plan and our subsequent general plans. Yeah.
So you're saying it is going to be on the fourth?
I'm sorry?
Yes, it is going to be on the fourth, right?
Yes.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is Dr. Gay nomination.
Okay, if you recall the last meeting, the meeting before that, after nominations, the name we received was Kevin Chris. If you got some other on the desk.
It'd be great. Have you contacted him?
Not yet.
I'll make a motion if we approve Kevin Chris, and have a motion, do you have a second?
I second. Can we do that before we ask him if he wants to do it?
No.
They all want to do it.
Well, we've done that, we've done that to Chris. I want somebody, somebody to say.
That way they don't feel any pressure when you're there.
We're seeing all the people.
All right, so I have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, next is the board of some appeals nomination.
Okay, the only recommendation, once again, that I have to cancel with the name of the group. If there's any other portion, bring them up.
As soon as he's been asked, as soon as he will.
How motion affect?
Aye, so moved.
Second.
That position is nominated by Town Council, but approved by Sherwood Court Judge, so we will approve. We'll proceed with that.
Okay, call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Good to have a new town resident at home.
Okay, next on the agenda is the enterprise zone proposed ordinance.
Under Title fifty-nine, there is an enterprise zone act that basically allows for municipalities, including of course the counties and towns, to set up incentives, refunds basis for local businesses, basically for any town development type program. But to be involved with that, you have to have an enterprise zone or which the town has not. The county has basically to the governor this past year has an enterprise zone, which has been designated within the county, includes part of the town, certain locations in the town, Main Street being one, parts of North Castle, four ways to other. In order to be able to make those incentives available as soon as possible, you've got to have your own zone, your enterprise zone, or this in place. We're working in conjunction with the county, we need to do this today, in terms of the December fourth to seventeenth, in order for these to be accepted through what programs to be continued. The government has a place, and is working hand in hand with the counties on this affair, to also adopt theirs just for actually amended, repealed and amended and renewed theirs just last week. So what you have for your package is fairly lengthy, new Article five for chapter ten, our finance and taxation section of our code. It basically covers four different incentive programs that you basically recommended for adoption back in May, which was proposed. Those would be a rehabilitated real estate tax exemption, a meals tax incentive, a lodging tax incentive, and business license fee abatement. They're all three-year programs, they're all set up to deal primarily with new businesses, with the exception of the rehabilitated real estate tax exemption. There are three-year incentive programs, they are revenue neutral, they're not new taxes, they're basically refund incentive. Those forward are there. I think if you were appropriate for the council, if you wanted to make a recommendation, if anyone in the public wants to hear this read, go through and read it tonight, it is fourteen pages long, single spaced.
I don't know, I think we should all hear Brad. Never mind.
You can do that, and you can act on that, it's a second to plan, we need to be careful as well.
Second. Do you have a motion that we approve the ordinance? First of all, we got a motion.
We got a vote.
Okay, any other comment, you're now called for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Second proposal too, that in terms of timing for this, I'm dealing with the county, the county board supervisors, and area development director Mark Thompson, to be passed as soon as possible. So in order to do that, at least you can have votes, you know, passing as emergency order, certainly think that's needed.
Anybody in motion, then we approve this.
Thanks.
Any other comments, you're now called for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Coupled with this, in order for this act, with these new orders to work, you have to have a funding agency to make it happen. And doing that across the town, the mayor, the president earlier revamped industrial development authority, it's basically I D A is the one entity that can then work with the town in order to make these funding incentives a reality. In order to make that happen, of course, the I D A is not a currently generating type entity that the town has, has worked with the town in order to fund it. But you also have in your package, it is a funding agreement, which is basically a local incentive funding agreement, the majority of which, there's a lot of definitions. The meetup basically describes that the town will work with the I D A and working through its orders to provide funds for these revenue incentives, in order to basically front the cost purposes of these active benefits or incentives to then be repaid, basically backed by the represented generated by the union with the incentive program at John's back. So in order to make this a reality, you also need to basically pass the funding agreement, which I have in the package. Again, I can go through and read it, it's not quite as long, it's only six pages as opposed to fifteen. But primarily what it does is basically the town is recognizing the I D A's impact and involved with the incentive program that you agreed that when the time comes for any citizens to come to town, that you will work with them in order to provide a necessary funding to be able to put into a conscious start.
I make a motion if you dispense with the meeting.
Have a second.
Second.
Any other comment, you're now called for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a motion to adopt this as an emergency.
No, basically what I'm going now is it's a funding agreement. You're basically wanting the managers, the manager to be here with the I D A, both having to sign off on it, like to basically allow the two of them to work together in order to make the enterprise zone or this function.
Okay. Got a second.
Second.
Any other discussion, you're now called for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the new business, is the meal tax exception.
Okay, reviewing all that, um, different pieces that we've gathered and procedures, I ran across meal tax. So reviewing it, currently, the business owner pays the meals tax by the date of December twenty, four thirty on the twentieth of the month, they are awarded a half a percent discount on what they owe, regardless of whether they pay the first five days or one minute before the deadline. This was originally put in place to encourage prompt payment, but in reality, this is not an incentive. The penalty, however, is the incentive. So with or without the discount, to avoid the penalty imposed on the twenty-first of the month, business owners will pay by four thirty on the twentieth of the month, regardless of if there's a discount or not, because two minutes later, they're going to get a dis, they're going to get a penalty. So eliminating this discount, which serves no purpose, if we're going to pay sooner, we create the same of about three thousand, probably closer to four thousand, conservative of three thousand a year, closer to four. Another thing, if we, and if you choose to eliminate this discount, it should be then, because if we have one of our large chain restaurants accept a proposal, this needs to be in place before they accept a proposal.
Just let me add to you that a little bit, if you'll recall, three years ago, the town for some reason had an incentive of five percent. That value, and by the way, the meals tax is a fee that's paid by the consumer, not the business. And when the consumer pays it, the idea is it goes toward the locality, it goes to locality. It's not the business, it's not, you know, the food chain. So for some reason, we had a five percent incentive, that was thirty thousand dollar loss. I had no, I've never seen it before, not to say that it happens somewhere, I just never seen it before. Learning the council, learning the different councils, we dropped that down to a half a percent. And she, Sharon, is wanting to recover the other half of the incentive, a half a percent, that the citizens are paying the supposedly going toward the locality.
We are rewarding them for paying it on time, five minutes before it's due, that they would have a penalty five minutes.
How much is the sales tax discount?
Half a shit. Oh, sales, sales, we don't have a sales.
I know, we don't, but when you, you have to pay that by the twentieth, okay? Which comes inside with the meal tax, basically, okay?
It's what the, it's trust money, it's what.
I understand, but if there was a discount that you, anybody with business other than meals tax, if you chose the sales tax, if you pay by the twentieth, you can.
Lee, do you agree with that? I am, I get that, I have sales tax for people to buy things in my office. So if I pay by a certain date to Virginia Department of Taxation, I get a discount.
Like the ten days or something?
I don't know, this is the twentieth, you pay by the twentieth. Okay, and I think that's what.
I still agree with you.
Yeah.
I don't think we need discount, we've got penalty that takes effect on the other side of the same handle.
All right, we've studied, the question, I'm thinking, it's not, it's out of the pocket.
I make a motion that we do away with the discount. Second.
Any discussion? I have questions. Okay, we're in the. Okay, uh, within the budget, advertising the tax rates, uh, are we advertising just strictly meals tax amount of 5%? Or if it's not 5%, it's seven, okay? How long will the discount?
Uh, when she sends out the monthly, uh, when they fill it out, it's on that.
I know, but on our rate change, on our rate of taxes, is that on there?
Yes.
It's not for you, because it's not for you, it's, it's our money.
What is, what is the penalty when they pay daily?
I don't know, I have a form with it, but I'll be black and white.
The percentage of the bound, uh? Any other discussion? You're done, call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, next on, you can say if it's not fair.
Okay, we, uh, during the work session prior to the meeting, we discussed the contract, uh, the same individual that did the enterprise zone for the county. Uh, we are looking to do that outside of the enterprise zone, which would consist of our entire political jurisdiction. Uh, cancel, well, well aware of the contracts and details behind it. Uh, more than happy to answer any questions you got, and I would like to have that approved, so that we can offer those incentives hand on fly.
Okay. Do you have a motion to that take?
Second.
We'll clarify, make sure that the person where we were contracted, what's his name?
Tim, Tim.
Any other motion, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, so, any discussion? You're done, call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is the, uh, US, uh, USDA public hearing.
Okay, uh, anymore with, uh, with federal money, we actually have to run an ad to take advantage of free money. Um, so, every year, for the last two years, we've been fortunate to pick up two cruisers. Uh, one year it was grand, another year it was 820. This year, in order to be competitive, uh, we are looking at an 820 match on the police cruisers. But I've gotta run the ad in which you have got in order to obtain the free money. And that's the fact. And that's straight from USDA.
Do I have a motion to set a public hearing for USDA?
So, two second.
Any other discussion? You're done, call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, uh, public hearing will be, uh, next meeting at 7:15. Okay, next on agenda is the chamber annual.
Okay, each of you may have been in the computer for down over the last week, you may not, but the chamber's out there, angle is coming up, and they've got a table, we can have, you know, tables there. I just need my head count of cancel numbers. I know Chris Brown, if you have a number, Jerry, then is anybody else, I'm planning on.
I should be there.
You can watch, Jerry, you can watch, Chris, you can watch.
No, I won't start it.
Okay. I've got at least four cancel numbers in this house, that's right. That's it. He'll be asking that too, huh? Here we go.
Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, town council email addresses.
Okay, um, each one of you, over the last couple of months, we've been working to try to obtain email addresses for cancel, uh, so that the public can better communicate with cancel, et cetera, et cetera. They are now set up, but not functioning. You have them on computers that are in front of you. Uh, so, hopefully in the next couple of days, they'll be active. I know they're bothering, showing each one of you how to access them. So, we're still having some computer trouble with, uh, you know, time orders and video pictures, it's just fair, but if they come up, we'll advertise accordingly.
Go ahead, list it on the website.
Yeah.
Next on the agenda is mobile services.
Um, three years ago, the town bid out, uh, mobile services. Um, identification will give the cancel, obviously, to show that bidding it out to the private sector was financially lucrative for the, uh, community. This is the last year that we can, uh, offer that contract to Jones Law Company. And next year, we'll have to bid it out, represent the cancel, offer it to the third county.
I make a motion to have a favor.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second. Any other discussion? You're done, call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next on the agenda is the jewel, uh, of the clinch discussion.
I've had several calls from the line of people thanking us for the time that we put down next to the Ford, welcome to Tassie. But I've also had a lot of comments about the sign out there to the pop shop that says Jewel of the Clinch. Number one, they don't know what it means. I don't know what it means either. I don't know whether any of you do or not. I don't like it. The sign's very rundown. I would like to see the sign removed. And if we keep it, I would like to, it says, "Thank you for visiting Tassie", sitting right there next to the pop shop. The Tassie way out on the other end of town. I think we're gonna keep it, we can move it out, uh, to the other end of town, since we can change the town name itself. But I think instead of Jewel of the Clinch, uh, we could use something else. Channel Tassie, or Thank You For Visiting, whatever. And one side of it has the Lions Club, the Quonos Club, and all those signs on them. It looks nice, the other side looks terrible.
Who gives a nothing of what we're, uh, right now, RNS, all three of those are at RNS in town here. We had them all redone. When we went back to the mound on the frames that are out there, the frames were all being done after 20 years. So, we're gonna completely redo the frames, and once again, the signs, we have them professionally done, or at RNS, a reading stop. Uh, so, this is, uh, in a very good way, yes, so, uh, the idea is to replace the frames or relocate them, and then put the signs that have already been made on those frames. Now, the issue, uh, Jack's probably does, you know, since that's what he's advised, is we don't do anything at all.
One, you got plans to go back down to the physical.
We're, we're gonna redo the whole thing. We're gonna completely redo it. Whatever was there before is gonna be again.
Sorry, you're pressing that right now.
This could have been looked.
Yeah, it will look the same, but it's gonna be fresh, new. I mean, Jack had an issue with the, with the slogan, Jewel of the Clinch. Honey, fatty, I'm there? Yes. Yeah, whatever was there before, we're gonna do it.
People just don't understand Jewel of the Clinch.
Well, I think they need a little history on that before we start changing the sign. I mean, there might be some great history there, and if it is, then we should consider keeping it.
You know, if you want to say, head of the clinch, I did understand that. Jewel of the Clinch, I know where it's made.
I wasn't on council, but I think there was competition among the council, somebody helping for a slogan.
That's next.
And that's where it came from.
They had several different possibilities. Look, I can't recall how they actually went about it in terms of the actual selection process, but it wasn't just like it was some kind of trick that came up with them.
I don't know how they decided, but I do know there were several, because I submitted some slogans that didn't get accepted.
That's great.
And Tassie went to head of the clinch. And I said, send the head of the clinch.
It's the basis of the clinch too, is the jewel.
Uh, that was the basis of the.
It's a play on merge jewel and all.
That's exactly where it probably, I'd say, probably, I think that's.
But at the same time, the sign, that it was done before the town expanded.
Did you say push it, push it back somewhere else?
Yeah, that's what I think. Out, you know, out there in that triangle, if you go out of town, it'll be difficult.
So, you're just wanting to relocate, it's not what it says.
Well, and take the jewel.
Well, what's it be in what was originally done? We, we've already had, we already had it made, and we're ready to put it out as soon as.
Well, this has been here in Knoxville, it's almost not a town.
But it's, it's the same, it's the same.
They're sixty-four.
Yes.
As soon as public works, you take your frame, open up with the signs, if you want change.
No, we, we can, we can, like, yeah, but let's do, move this one out here.
Okay.
Also, while removing that one out there, let's get the East End.
Four sixty.
Nice, four sixty, something like on the west end.
I'll get it.
Let's get it in there in the Sesskwith, it seems you want.
Okay.
Hey, maybe before I get to Monday and on the rescue squad before we do that.
All right. Uh, a couple of things on, uh, it's not on agenda, it's, we have a resolution for, uh, already, it's a resolution proposing Clinch River State Park. We actually did this three years ago, uh, but, uh, they're going to the last, uh, to Richmond next week, and, uh, it's actually trying to get the, uh, Capes Creek as a state park, and here's the resolution. Whereas the Clinch River is the national, North America's most biological diverse river and culled more, more rare and endangered species than any other body of water in Virginia. Whereas the Clinch River Valley initiative has done most of the work promoting the service of the Clinch River for recreation use. And whereas the attic collecting nationwide suggests state parks are catalysts for economic development in the regions surrounding them. And whereas the region of Southwest Virginia is, is in desperate need of economic development catalysts to replace quickly disappearing coal jobs. And whereas Capes Creek's park sets on headwaters to Clinch River, Clinch River and Tassie family, to serve as a first label proposed Clinch River State Park. But let it be resolved that the town council, town council supports the efforts, named Capes Creek Park as the first label Clinch River State Park. And let it be resolved that town council, town council supports efforts of the Clinch River Initiative to see a screen, propose, concept of the state park to flow from the headwaters to NC State Line, adopted on this day. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
Second.
I have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to make a comment. I had a historical, the first state parks in state Virginia, seven of them were created when a gentleman by the name of George Superior was the governor of Virginia. It's about time his home county had a state park.
Amen. Maybe you ought to protect the rescue.
You should.
Let's do that. We add that to that, okay?
Make a motion, you amend it.
To be with it.
I submit.
Can you use it with that tone, Mr.?
I'm gonna do that.
I'm gonna do that.
I have a motion, a second. I'm gonna get additions to this resolution. If not, you're done, call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Also, uh, I'll, I'll mention here that, uh, basically, the state of town council that, uh, the, the rescue squad has received, received a grant for a new rescue squad. Is there anything else to call for, council?
I'd like to bring one thing, fellas. It's nothing new or nothing old. During Christmas, I went over to North Apple at the white Christmas giveaway, and I would like to tell the town manager, the town police, and North Apple, that they did a tremendous job in giving those presents out, keeping the highway clear, and everything. And I don't see any reason why we as a town can't do the same thing that they're giving to the food. They, uh, they had the sheriff's department over there, and they were controlling the traffic, they had it set up to where the traffic came up, picked up their bags, and moved right along. And I would suggest that maybe we might wanna work with them over there and see if we can do that, and then alleviate any problems with the traffic.
We'll do it.
I'd also like to thank the police department and all those involved with the shop and the cotton park, and that was, uh, at Magic Mark for Christmas, and it was a great opportunity for a lot of young people, I'm just, just a great reward.
Uh, I'll, I'll be traveling next week to the, basically, update, if I can work everything out, I'll, I'll be traveling too. And, uh, uh, just if you need, uh, contact your representative, if you, uh, think they need to vote on some areas, uh, contact rural more fields and Ben Shakers, and, uh, we'll see if we can get them to vote on, uh, uh, areas for us, if this thing, if there's anything else, but, uh, everybody.
Right, no, no, sure.
I have a second.
Second.